Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please sit and be seated.
Graham Cassoon.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez is absent. We have a quorum.
Approval of minutes.
Tonight we have the common council minutes from May 7th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Alderman Kleiner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Correspondence?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city. Please come up to the microphone, identify yourself, and give you about four minutes.
Good evening, Merritt Winter, 121 Lake Avenue. I'd like to speak to the subject of the landlord being held responsible for the property of the evicted tenant. I have two rental units. I've operated them since 1966. During that time period, two have left voluntarily according to the rental agreement that they had signed, and one I had one full bore, sure present eviction. In all cases, everything was taken with them, so I had no problem. If there is material left after they're -- they've gone, first of all, I need an inventory on it, otherwise I'll be held responsible for whatever they say was there. There has to be a signed agreement that these certain items were left in the apartment, and then that comes to where I store them. I can't clean the apartment, and I can't re-rent it with their stuff in it. The alternative would be to buy a rental unit and pay somebody to transport the material. So we need all those. The tenants know that the eviction will occur. They -- plenty of warning, so they can't say they didn't know about it. We don't show up, knock on the door, and say, "Get out." If they've left things in the apartment, as far as I'm concerned, they're abandoned. Anyway, it's -- I think if I'm held responsible for the property, I want two things. I want a inventory of the property, so I know what I'm responsible for keeping, and it's not their word or my word. And I'd like to have a reasonable time period, and I'd set one week. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else like to address the council? Once the president -- okay.
Hi, good evening. My name is Barbara Bonham. I'm the chair of the Middletown Shade Tree Committee, and I'm here with some of our committee members tonight, and I wanted to just explain what we do a little bit. We work in conjunction with the schools, recreation and parks, the Department of Public Works, and our volunteers help select and design and plant and prune and water trees. And we also have a survey of the trees of our city, and we also like to do educational programs for the public. We're going to do something in September, I'll keep you posted. We're going to do an Arbor Day celebration. So if you would like to have more information on our committee, you can find us on the city website under Community, and then from there you go under Committees on the pull-down menu. And we also have a Facebook page that we're developing under Middletown Shade Tree Committee. And we're always happy to welcome volunteers, and eventually we would like to develop and adopt a park program in the future. And you can call me at 845-343-8125 if you are interested in learning more. So, we are actually here tonight to congratulate the city of Middletown for being recognized as a 10th year Tree City by the Arbor Day Foundation. So Mayor DiStefano, on behalf of the Shade Tree Committee?
You're going to get a tree, Mayor. You're going to get a little tree.
Yes, you are. I would like to present this 10th year Tree City USA Arbor Day Foundation Award.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
So, congratulations. Uh-huh. The Arbor Day Foundation also sent us this flag to commemorate the 10 years, and it can be flown in one of our beautiful parks.
Sure.
And we have two metallic signs, like the one that Bob Dietrich is holding, and these can be put in the gateways of the city.
Absolutely. We're doing a new -- couple new gateways, too.
Yes, that's -- that's -- exactly. So, you're -- you're welcoming.
Well, thank you. And thank you for all your hard work and your committee's hard work, and we hope you get more volunteers, too. That'd be great.
Well, we appreciate the city's commitment to greening the city.
Thank you so much.
And planting a new generation of trees.
All right.
Thank you.
Cool stuff. Well, I know people -- a lot of people are tearing down trees, too, though it's -- so it's important that we keep this program in place. So thanks for your efforts.
Thank you very much, and welcome, everyone. Anyone else like to address this committee before we do the presentation? I know we have a presentation, and we just want to see if anyone else wants to. No one else? Maria? Mayor?
Mr. Acting Something.
I'm not a happy camper.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the council and to introduce the Trust for Public Land. They've been here before. Their work is completed. You have a copy of the draft, what I hope to be the final draft feasibility report. As you know, we did hire the Trust for Public Land along with their consultants, the Pattern for -- Hudson Valley Pattern for Progress, and DVS, which I believe is the security firm, to study the feasibility of converting -- not converting, of utilizing a tremendous asset of our city, which is our reservoir property of about 1,250-plus acres with a potential for expansion, as a recreational resource. And they've completed the study. They've looked at the economic benefits of parks and open space in Middletown. They've looked at participation rates, stakeholder views. They've been out in the community, speaking with people. They've done a trail and facility assessment, security and safety analysis. They've made recommendations for implementation, and how do we pursue this down the line in different phases. As you know, we're going to implement Phase One hopefully this year, once adopted by the common council. Phase Two and Phase Three, we're applying for one of the consolidated funding grants through Maria Bruni's office in Caitlin, and it's just an exciting project that has been well received by the community. So, without further ado, I would like to introduce the Trust for Public Land to make their presentation. We did a little advance notice on this, hoping that people would come to the meeting or tune in on TV, just to see exactly what we're proposing for the use of this land. So, I'll bring them up. Is Carter here? Is Carter -- Carter?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Carter.
Okay. Thanks so much.
I want to thank the mayor and thank the council for hearing me out, and thank the mayor for and his team for inviting us in. My name's Carter Strickland, I'm with the Trust for Public Land. The Trust for Public Land is a national nonprofit that believes in the power of parks. We work all over the country to build parks and preserve land. Here in New York, we've been -- had an office since 1978, and we've worked on iconic places like Sterling Forest, helping create that park, or Wasting Ridge, and many of the places that you know about. I'm also pleased to say that, you know, our focus since we started in the early '70s has always been on people, and facilitating the connection between people and nature. It's important in many ways, sort of experience has borne us out in terms of having parks as economic drivers and also community drivers, create strong communities. We were invited in, and we looked at it, and our -- the short answer is yes. A waterfront, a reservoir trail system is feasible, and not only is it feasible, we think it's a great idea. And it'll pay back in many ways in making Middletown an even better place. So I'm going to walk you through a very brief presentation. You all have a copy of the report, draft report, and we'll take comments. We finalize it soon, I hope, as well as a map that we've created of the proposed area. All the images you're going to see, we had a photographer last weekend, it was one of the rare non-rainy days here, and we had some local folks come out and sort of test the trails. And I think you'll see visually the potential for this trail system. Again, it's a tremendous asset you have, and so we specialize in converting municipal assets and working with municipalities to help them convert assets. Could be an old rail bed, and I know you're familiar with that, how that's working with the Heritage Trail. We work with underused school properties that turn asphalt lots into beautiful parking playgrounds, and here, a beautiful, really remarkable watershed system into potential trail system. So here we have a picture of it. This is what we're going to talk about today. Again, all these images are from that beautiful day in June there. You know, it's a tremendous asset. We do have recommendations for immediate action as well as long-term actions to turn this into a multipurpose recreational asset. Just to back up a little bit, we've studied, many ways, outdoor recreation and the importance of these kind of facilities to the state of New York. The outdoor recreation economy now is kind of slowly developed. It's now the fourth biggest industry in New York by jobs. It's the 10th biggest by wages. So it's pretty significant. You know, we're talking about over 300,000 jobs in New York State. It's pretty remarkable. So it's not a frivolous thing, it's not just an amenity. It really is essential for a lot of communities, particularly in the Hudson Valley, which is a place that I happen to love. So we know the numbers do roll up in a very big way, and we're actually working with the state of New York on some important elements that will support that with -- between state parks, DEC, and the par-state development. And in fact, as Middletown knows all too well, the state does believe, through its Downtown Revitalization Initiative program and other programs, in the transformative power of parks and trails. You know, in Middletown, we can see that it -- we do think that there's certainly an economic benefit to it. Our studies have shown that, in fact, there's an enhancement in property value, and that a dollar invested in New York State, throughout the state, in open space, returns $7, and all sorts of benefits that can be increases in, you know, house valuations, which does show up, you know, in municipal coffers, retention of employees and students and, you know, young people who want to stay in a place, and significant health benefits. There's a lot of emerging studies that have shown the significant mental and physical health benefits of having close-by parks. If it's close, you don't have an excuse, you're going to use it. And it's more healthy to exercise outside. We've seen that, and it does show up in public health stats. I'm going to call up our project partner, Pattern for Progress, who's done a lot of work in Hudson Valley. They have did some stakeholder interviews, and Andy Stewart can describe it. Where are you, Andy?
Thank you, Carter. That's right. I'll let the button thing go for just for a minute.
Okay. I'll maintain control.
Just very briefly, I'm Andy Stewart, I'm with Hudson Valley Pattern for Progress. Many of you probably know Joe Chaka, who lives in our staff, who lived in Middletown for many years, and has served the city in terms of urban development and housing studies and things like that. It's my honor to be here, a new guy at Pattern for Progress, and I've really, really enjoyed getting to know your city a bit. My particular role in this, you know, working with Carter and his staff, the experts on parks, was to make sure that we did schedule some time with stakeholders, with some key informants, do some interviews, and listen a little bit to make sure that our planning process and our assessment of the feasibility of this reservoir system for trails is responsive to the community. And I think, as Carter has said, and I think it's obvious, I think we have folks here tonight who represent the civic community and the running community. This concept is obviously very well-aligned with the leadership the city's council has shown, with the investment the city has made in parks, with the civic communities. Long-term, I think, is the Orange Classic 40 years old, something like that. I mean, there are outdoor rec and running communities here with longstanding traditions, which are really exceptional. I mean, when I spoke with folks from the school district, as someone with a background in environmental education, I was really impressed to see it. Of course, your own Parks Director, Christine Brink, you know, there's a tradition of outdoor education here, which I actually think is kind of exceptional. I don't know that many school districts who can count in their activities the kind of outdoor adventure and getting kids outdoors, not just on the playground, but into the woods and exploring, that are happening here. So the results of our stakeholder interviews were many, many, many forms of support for the city council's leadership on this. And they include, for example, folks who run local businesses, talking about how a large percentage of their customers, in their view, are outdoorsy. You know, the Facebook page for the brewery, for example, when he posts a picture of him catching a fish, you know, a lot of his customers are quick to jump on board. There's a sense of the importance of outdoor recreation for bringing people to the city, for putting feed on the street, as they say, in economic development, which is coming from the stakeholder interviews. Quality of life is very important, not just for visitors, but also for people who live here, and park development serves that exceptionally well. And folks come in, in all different sorts. You know, we have kids, we have busy families who are looking for nearby opportunities, and we have older folks who want to be able to walk in places where they're not worried about getting hit by a car. And the idea of having a place to walk, run, bike, birdwatch, and so on, where you're protected from interacting with cars, is an important asset for the city to have. And I had one person speak very directly to that, and she basically said, you know, "I'm out here, I push my stroller, I'm a runner, and I really look for and value places to do that where I'm not having to cross streets." And so this trail system would offer an opportunity for that kind of recreation. So just having said that, I wanted to end on a note, just echoing what your wonderful Shade Tree Committee kind of put on the table, which is the idea of an adopt-a-park. That's one of the other concepts that came forward. There are volunteers and groups in the city who are ready to step forward and volunteer and help raise money and do things that are helpful to conserving this reservoir land as an accessible area, to contribute to that process, and I think that's a remarkable thing. And that came through very clearly and strongly in the stakeholder interviews that I did. So once again, I just want to say, it's an honor to work in your community. It's a pleasure to see leadership by the city council and the mayor and the city staff on really asking good questions about the feasibility of this project, and it seems, from what I've seen, to be very well-aligned with the value system and with the needs of the community and the needs of the business community as well. So that's my two cents. Thank you very much for listening. I'll turn the microphone back over to Carter.
Okay. Thanks, Andy. So, and you can see this lovely quote we have in here. It's definitely needed in Middletown. We did do an analysis that's laid out in more detail in the report, I won't replicate it here, of existing facilities, which are pretty impressive, and how this would fit in. This will essentially be, you know, a little bit of a wilder experience, you know, but very close to the city. We did do an existing feasibility analysis, what are the trails, what are the access points? That helped us lay out the plan. And the good news is, because it is an active water supply facility, the roads are in pretty good shape. There's -- there are control points at the entrances. So the bones are here, and it basically, it's not an expensive lift to turn this into a pretty remarkable facility overall. You know, there's -- I visited in a very wet day, again, it was, you know, this year was very wet. You know, there's some points, and that kind of shows itself in our proposed budget, where there might be some gravel fill that's necessary. But these are very suitable for certain activities. Again, we -- some potential activities, such as horseback riding or other, you know, anything on the water, we propose down the line in the future that has to be studied. What's compatible with a water supply system now are things like hiking, walking, bicycle riding and the like, and these are suitable facilities for that. We did hire a firm that we've worked with in the past, DVS, it's a security firm, they've worked on parks throughout the country, and they did an analysis there. There's several examples laid out. In the report, one is a big trail in Chicago, which is a city that has some challenges in terms of safety. That trail is actually one of the safer parts of the city. So again, that was -- another part of the country is in North Carolina. Again, some lower crime rates there, closer to home in New Haven and North Hampton, Massachusetts, Greenway. We found that when we turn, you know, abandoned corridors, whether they be utility rights of way, which can be trails, or whether they be abandoned rail lines, often sort of an unsupervised use is the most dangerous. Once it's open to the public and there are eyes on there, we say that positive uses displace negative uses, and that's true for parks across the country. And finally, and our security firm looked at it, but I have some personal experience, I used to run New York City's water supply system, and we very much opened that up to public use. Statutorily, since 1905, when the Catskill system was authorized, there's always been actually on-reservoir use for fishing and also hunting in that area. We, over the last decade or so, opened it up to things like cross-country skiing and hiking and the like, and it just helped provide security, actually, in our opinion, to that system, because there were -- there's a user base out there. Everybody's equipped pretty much with a cellphone and can report things. So it really, we found it to be a force magnifier for our watershed police in that sense. We do lay out here in a proposed budget, again, this whole thing is a draft and proposal, and this is a proposed, with some elements. You can see here, Phase One is fairly modest, and that involves, you know, strengthening some of the gates and access points, putting some gravel fill in, creating some gravel for parking lot, installing some solar lights, and the reason for solar lights is very simply to avoid wiring, which can be expensive, and, you know, it's a proven technology. Putting in some benches and picnic tables to make it useful, trash receptacles and the like, fairly basic stuff. None of the -- some information signs and the like. For later phases, the, you know, expensive item would be if, you know, and, you know, should external funding come in or other funding sources, rehabilitation of existing structure to be a visitor's center, which would make it very, very useful. And then some additional fence upgrade and repair and extensions of additional trails, some of which can be done through volunteer organizations. And again, we have a lot of experience in setting up those park conservancy and trail volunteer groups throughout the area. Our recommendations in the report going forward include things such as access and trails. We do think that there, and you can refer to the map perhaps that you all have, a primary access point being off of Mapes Road to that former caretaker's house and garage, which we would propose to be rehabilitated. It's a very central spot around Highland Lake. The nice thing about Highland Lake is you're not going to get external traffic there because it's controlled, it's a nice loop. It's a beautiful lake, of course. There's some proposed trails here marked according to the key, existing trails in green that are hiking trails. Everything else is suitable for bikes. So a proposed, in orange, additions to hiking trail, just to connect the Monhegan Lake and Highland Lake, and then some proposed, what we call multipurpose, that is code word for a bike path that is wide enough to be used for both bike and hike at the same time, you know, to, again, make a loop around Monhegan Lake. But it doesn't take much to make these really useful recreational facility. We have proposals for that, you know, those additional trails going forward. Signs and wayfinding are very important, and it's not a big complicated maze here that we're talking about, but nonetheless, people do find it very useful and enhance their security to have clear signs, well-lit, especially at trail junctions and at the gates. We do have some suggestions about activation programming and marketing, sponsoring things like fun runs or a 5K, turkey trots and the like can really bring people, first-time users, to this area. We do anticipate, and part of the cost savings that we built in are having school trips here rather than maybe more distant locations, have them close. You know, there's a provision for having some periodic patrols going forward, but at least in the short term, we think that existing, you know, watershed and other recreational staff in the city can provide some of the operation and maintenance. With that, I think that concludes our presentation. Happy to stay in touch, we're going to be working with the mayor over the next few weeks to finalize this report and make ourselves open for additional work.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you want to --
No, a question's on the board.
Well, I didn't know if you had any upfront first. Anyone on the board have any questions?
Can this trail be used for skiing also?
It could be used for skiing, absolutely. And that the cross-country skiing, in particular, you know, there are some hilly stretches, believe it or not, around some of these lakes, and, you know, as long as people understand that. One thing that we've seen work very well for cross-country skiing trails and training for school facilities, for example, believe it or not, the New Pulse High School has a ski team because they're able to use Mohawk. So it opens up some nice possibilities for a school system. For other users who are not coached and are doing it for the first time, you know, steep hills, we recommend having a -- not easy to navigate on cross-country skis, so there can be a color-coded system and map for the -- specific to the winter season so that people understand.
Okay. Anyone else? Go on, Alderman Tobin.
Would you suggest like carry-in, carry-out, like no garbage cans, maybe bags on the way up there?
You know, we did provide, you know, that is a very interesting suggestion, and it a little bit depends on the culture and experience at other parks, I would say, in the system. Does it work or not? I guess ultimately, I'm a pragmatist, I do carry-in, carry-out in wilderness areas. This is not quite the Adirondacks or the Catskills. It's probably will be perceived as a little bit wilder park, particularly if there's going to be picnic areas or facilities. We do recommend trash receptacles and periodic areas, but I, if people actually would carry out, that certainly can reduce carrying costs.
Where do you see the -- where's -- where would you -- where would the main entrance be?
Well, so the main entrance, if you look at the map, coming in from the north, see that former caretaker's house and garage, right by Highland Lake, which is really the middle of this three-lake system, we see that as the main entrance point, and we've kind of scoped out an area where you could put a very simple gravel lot for parking. It would not be that complicated. You know, there are some other gates, but really from this one spot, you can access the whole network.
And we want to encourage everybody to use it. In your experience, do you -- is it better just to open it to the public generally, or would you have people register, like a pass? Like, I know the Mohawk Preserve, you have to get a season pass, or you go to Minnewaska, you got to sign in at the gate, or just have it open for everybody? Man, we want to encourage people to use it as many people as possible.
Yeah, I think in a place like this, it is fairly compact. You know, there's roughly four or five miles of existing roads and another four or five miles here. I don't think people, you know, are going to get lost. There's also, not everywhere here, cellphone reception, but generally around there, there is. So I, you know, I think that might be overkill to have a trail register and the like.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson.
Thank you. I just want to compliment you. I was a little bit taken aback by the cost of this study, but I think it was well worth the investment. I thank you for that. It gives us a lot of, I think, a lot of good demographic data that could be used for other initiatives. For instance, I never had to think about the fact that perhaps 18% of our residents don't have access to a motor vehicle, so it's a lot of good information. I also like the idea that you talked about the long path connecting with that. My question is, when we talk about ADA accessibility, of whom are we speaking, and what exactly does that mean?
ADA accessibility with regard to trail systems can often -- often has to do with the surface treatment of some of the trails. You know, and as long as --
There's several examples laid out in the report. One is a big trail in Chicago, which is a city that has some challenges in terms of safety. That trail is actually one of the safer parts of the city. So again, that was another part of the country is in North Carolina. Again, some lower crime rates there, closer to home in New Haven and North Hampton, Massachusetts, Greenway. We found that when we turn abandoned corridors, whether they be utility rights of way, which can be trails, or whether they be abandoned rail lines, often sort of an unsupervised use is the most dangerous. Once it's open to the public and there are eyes on there, we say that positive uses displace negative uses. And that's true for parks across the country. And finally, our security firm looked at it, but I have some personal experience. I used to run New York City's water supply system, and we very much opened that up to public use. Statutorily, since 1905, when the Catskill system was authorized, there's always been actually on-reservoir use for fishing and also hunting in that area. We, over the last decade or so, opened it up to things like cross-country skiing and hiking and the like. It just helped provide security, actually, in our opinion, to that system because there's a user base out there. Everybody's equipped pretty much with a cellphone and can report things. So really, we found it to be a force magnifier for our watershed police in that sense. We do lay out here in a proposed budget, again, this whole thing is a draft and proposal, and this is a proposed, with some elements. You can see here, Phase One is fairly modest, and that involves strengthening some of the gates and access points, putting some gravel fill-in, creating some gravel for parking lot, installing some solar lights, and the reason for solar lights is very simply to avoid wiring, which can be expensive, and you know, it's a proven technology, putting in some benches and picnic tables to make it useful, trash receptacles and the like, fairly basic stuff, some information signs and the like. For later phases, the expensive item would be if, you know, should external funding come in or other funding sources, rehabilitation of existing structure to be a visitor center, which would make it very, very useful. And then some additional fence upgrade and repair and extensions of additional trails, some of which can be done through volunteer organizations. And again, we have a lot of experience in setting up those park conservancy and trail volunteer groups throughout the area. Our recommendations in the report going forward include things such as access and trails. We do think that there, and you can refer to the map perhaps that you all have, a primary access point being off of Mapes Road to that former caretaker's house and garage, which we would propose to be rehabilitated. It's a very central spot around Highland Lake. The nice thing about Highland Lake is you're not going to get external traffic there because it's controlled, it's a nice loop, it's a beautiful lake, of course. There's some proposed trails here marked according to the key, existing trails in green that are hiking trails, everything else is suitable for bikes. So proposed in orange additions to hiking trail, just to connect the Monhegan Lake and Highland Lake, and then some proposed, what we call multipurpose, that is code word for a bike path that is wide enough to be used for both bike and hike at the same time, you know, to again, make a loop around Monhegan Lake. But it doesn't take much to make these really useful recreational facility. We have proposals for that, you know, those additional trails going forward. Signs and wayfinding are very important, and it's not a big complicated maze here that we're talking about, but nonetheless, people do find it very useful and enhance their security to have clear signs, well-lit, especially at trail junctions and at the gates. We do have some suggestions about activation programming and marketing, sponsoring things like fun runs or a 5K, turkey trots and the like can really bring people, first-time users, to this area. We do anticipate, and part of the cost savings that we built in are having school trips here rather than maybe more distant locations, have them close. You know, there's a provision for having some periodic patrols going forward, but at least in the short term, we think that existing watershed and other recreational staff in the city can provide some of the operation and maintenance. With that, I think that concludes our presentation. Happy to stay in touch. We're going to be working with the mayor over the next few weeks to finalize this report and make ourselves open for additional work.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you want to...
No, questions on the board.
Well, I didn't know if you had any upfront first. Anyone on the board have any questions?
Can this trail be used for skiing also?
It could be used for skiing, absolutely. And cross-country skiing in particular, you know, there are some hilly stretches, believe it or not, around some of these lakes, and you know, as long as people understand that. One thing that we've seen work very well for cross-country skiing trails and training for school facilities, for example, believe it or not, the New Pulse High School has a ski team because they're able to use Mohawk. So it opens up some nice possibilities for a school system. For other users who are not coached and are doing it for the first time, you know, steep hills, we recommend having, not easy to navigate on cross-country skis. So there can be a color-coded system and map for the, specific to the winter season so that people understand.
Okay. Anyone else? Alderman Toman.
Would you suggest like carry-in, carry-out, like no garbage cans, bags on the way up there?
You know, we did provide, you know, that is a very interesting suggestion, and a little bit depends on the culture and experience at other parks, I would say, in the system. Does it work or not? I guess ultimately, I'm a pragmatist. I do carry-in, carry-out in wilderness areas. This is not quite the Adirondacks or the Catskills. It probably will be perceived as a little bit wilder park, particularly if there's going to be picnic areas or facilities. We do recommend trash receptacles in periodic areas, but I, if people actually would carry-out, that certainly can reduce carrying costs.
Where do you see the, where would the main entrance be?
Well, so the main entrance, if you look at the map, coming in from the north, see that former caretaker's house and garage, right by Highland Lake, which is really the middle of this three-lake system, we see that as the main entrance point. And we've kind of scoped out an area where you could put a very simple gravel lot for parking, and it would not be that complicated. You know, there are some other gates, but really from this one spot, you can access the whole network.
And we want to encourage everybody to use it. In your experience, do you, is it better just to open it to the public generally, or would you have people register, like a pass? Like in all the Mohawk preserve, you have to get a season pass, or you go to Minnewaska, you gotta sign in at the gate, or just have it open for everybody? Man, we want to encourage people to use it as many people as possible.
Yeah, I think in a place like this, it is fairly compact. You know, there's roughly four or five miles of existing roads and another four or five miles here. I don't think people, you know, are going to get lost. There's also, not everywhere here, cellphone reception, but generally around there, there is. So I, you know, I think that might be overkill to have a trail register and the like.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson.
Thank you. I just want to compliment you. I was a little bit taken aback by the cost of this study, but I think it was well worth the investment. I thank you for that. It gives us a lot of, I think, a lot of good demographic data that could be used for other initiatives. For instance, I never had to think about the fact that perhaps 18% of our residents don't have access to a motor vehicle. So it's a lot of good information. I also like the idea that you talked about the long path connecting with that. My question is, when we talk about ADA accessibility, of whom are we speaking, and what exactly does that mean?
ADA accessibility with regard to trail systems can often, often has to do with the surface treatment of some of the trails. You know, and as long as not every, in our experience, when we lay out trail systems, not every trail on every property has to be accessible by a wheelchair. I mean, that rules out things like hiking trails. It is nice, I'm not going to say required, but I think it's certainly appropriate to have some portion of a facility available to people in wheelchairs. That's essentially what we're talking about. And you know, if, for example, if a structure is rehabilitated onsite, then certainly ADA compliant restrooms and the like would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Remarks of department heads. Economic Development, Ms. Bruni, please.
Nothing this evening unless anybody has any questions.
Anyone have a question for Maria? Okay. Superintendent Recreation, Brink. I know you have something.
It's summertime, so I do have a little bit of information for the public because we're getting a lot of phone calls on our busy time. Kids are getting out of school. So to get a little business out of the way, one, this past week, we just had our preschool graduation and moving up. So 30-some kids are either going to kindergarten or moving up into the four-year-olds. With that being said, we've already started registration for the new school year. Our morning class is almost full. Our afternoon class has about five kids in it. So we're letting the public know the cost of this program is $120 a month, and they're there five days a week. So there's a morning session or afternoon session. So folks that want to get on it, you really should call the Recreation Department and answer any questions you have, but that is filling up. Our summer camps, as I've told you guys and the public before, everything's online registration. Our staff is willing to help you. You can come into the office to navigate that system. Once you kind of get a short tutorial and get your profile up, it's very easy to navigate. You can also call our office and we can help you navigate it. It's definitely been a plus, the online registration. We've worked out a lot of the hiccups starting in the spring, and we just don't want people afraid of it. Please call us and we will help you. As far as summer camps, we have our sports camp at Truman Moon Elementary this year due to construction in our buildings. We have our little people playtime for four, five, and six-year-olds. We have our counselor and training program for 13, 14, and 15-year-olds. We have an adventure camp. We also have a cheerleading camp, and we have the very popular Junior Police Academy for two different age groups. So there's something for everybody. So that is what we're offering this summer. Our pools do open up July 1st, even with the cold and the rain. People are wanting to know why our pools aren't open yet. We always open the Monday following high school graduation. So July 1st, our three pools will be open. We still need a few lifeguards. So if anybody knows lifeguards and anybody looking for a job, please stop to see us. All other positions are filled. They're doing their training orientation this week and next, but we do need some lifeguards. Tennis clinics, best kept secret. Our adult clinics are already running, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday morning. Our kids' clinics start July 1st. That's also Monday, Wednesday, and Friday mornings, all of July, all of August, for just 60 bucks, and it's three days a week. So that's an opportunity too, and the tennis pro is Jim Holden, who's been there forever and does an incredible job. Our boxing program will continue to run in the summer. Anybody wanting information now that you have a little more time, our young folks without school, please contact us. And something I want to mention that is new, we ran the kids' marathon, which I think I let you know how a lot of kids were doing a mile and a half every night, and they finished their last mile at the 10K Classic, about 40 kids. Ray Lynn, our Assistant Superintendent, came up with something called the Middletown Runners Club, Runner and Walking Club, and she wants to do it at Davage this summer because right on a track, it gets a little hot with no shade. So we already have 100 people registered for this running club this summer, which will meet Tuesdays and Thursdays up at Davage Park. And that's the last I have of my business, but I think seeing how many numbers are interested in this walking and running club feeds right into what Carter Strickland was just talking about. People are looking for a place to walk, they want a safe place to walk where there isn't vehicles, they want a place to walk where there's other people, and they feel safe. And I think this project will be such an asset, not just recreationally for the city of Middletown and the surrounding area, but economically, just as huge. You know, there's a few naysayers, you know, I hear them, and they're like, oh, they open it up, there'll be quads up there, there'll be this up there. They're up there now because there's no eyes up there watching. They're going to disappear. Illegal hunting, going to disappear. Illegal fishing, going to disappear. The bodies up there is what's going to make the difference, and you're going to see such a positive change in what's going on. I already have people like, hey, Brink, can you take me up there walking? Hey, Brink, can we meet on a Sunday and go up there? So they can't wait to get inside there and check things out, and I know a lot of people are watching tonight. So I want to thank the mayor for his vision, I want to thank you guys for their vision, I want to thank Carter Strickland and his team for making a great presentation. These guys know what they're talking about, and in our field, you'll be amazed, amazed what this is going to do for the community. And that's all I have tonight.
Any questions for Superintendent Brinkerhoff? Chief Fuansu, please.
Good evening. Just a couple items this evening. First, I just want to thank the people that came out and made our kids' celebration this past Saturday a success. My staff, specifically Officer Beebe, for her coordination and putting everything together, the Fire Department, Parks and Rec, and all the volunteers and attendees that made this a successful event. Coming up in the next couple of weeks is our 4th of July celebration and the holiday. And year after year, we always have issues with fireworks being illegally used. I just want to remind everyone that fireworks in the city of Middletown are illegal to possess, use, and sell. In and around the holiday coming up, I will have additional enforcement. We'll be checking the stores and bodegas to ensure that they are not selling them and dealing with them accordingly. And lastly, I know the school year is coming to a close, but as we look to September for the start of the next school year, we are in desperate need of crossing guards. We have a very difficult time keeping them. It is a job that is needed. They do a great job for their youth, keeping them safe. And if anyone is interested, we'd like you to reach out to us, come into the police station, email us, call us, and let us know so we can start the application process. Other than that, I have nothing else this evening.
Any questions for the chief? City clerk.
I have nothing this evening.
Any questions for John? Public hearings?
Nothing this evening.
Petitions and complaints?
Nothing this evening.
Remarks of the mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to build on Sparrow's question and Carter's response regarding the entrance into the facility. Carter's, you know, his response would be where the caretaker's house is. That's for if someone's driving primarily to the facility. This is located just a stone's throw away from the community campus, across the street, basically. If you look at the Monhegan Lake, the red trail that's on the bottom there is right across from Pilgrim's Estates. We do have an entry point that we are putting there. We're building a parking, small parking lot there now for people to be able to either drive there or just ride their bikes through the park at the reservoir. That will also connect into the psychiatric center campus, where we are working with property owners there to develop a trail system that will then connect to Oliver Avenue, which will be the crossing, and then 200, 300 feet up the road is the Heritage Trail, and then you're into Davage Park. So there's a huge connectivity. This is not just an isolated park. This is going to be connected, you get into your car right now and you can be at the main, at Monhegan, where we designated a parking area in less than five minutes. So it's, or you'll be able to get on your bike right back here and within 10 minutes be into the Reservoir Park, or into Davage, or to the expanded Davage, all the way out to Ingrasia Road. So there's a lot of connectivity, and Dr. Johnson mentioned the long path, and that's, I think, what Carter was referencing with some possible additional work that we might be using. We want to get this up and running first, but we're excited about it, and I think the public's very excited about it also. Any questions for me?
Any question for the mayor?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Remarks for the alderman. Alderman Burr.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Carter and his presentation. Another great thing for the city of Middletown between this, the expansion of Davage, it just keeps growing and growing. Thank you.
Alderman Jean-François.
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. I want to thank the Commissioner for the electronics drop-off day. I think, when I checked in, it was going very well. It wasn't the mountain TVs from the first time, but it was pretty steady for the day. I wanted to thank Chris and the Lions Club, the Fishing Derby, and let people know that once again, girls won both the largest fish and the most fish. So that's a few years in a row, so congratulations to them. I thank the Police Department and Fire Department and everyone else involved with the Kids' Day. That was, it was a beautiful day for it. We will have our, well, actually, we'll have another meeting before our second ward constituents' meeting, but we, if the mayor is available on July 8th, and we're not sure, but if he is, because the grandbabies decided to come the same night as...
I am available.
Okay, so...
Seven o'clock?
Yeah, seven o'clock, yes, on July 8th. And I thank Chief Fuansu, who came to our last constituents' meeting. We, for an hour and a half, had some excellent discussions, so thank you for that. Last meeting was June 4th. I mentioned D-Day, but what I forgot to mention was that was exactly to the day, the 100-year anniversary of the 19th Amendment and women's suffrage. So that's when Congress approved it. It was a year later that it was finally ratified, but that was a pretty important day. We'll have a couple more meetings before the CPV, the DEC holds their air quality public hearings. That'll be on July 17th at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM in the high school, so we'll remind people of that. I have to say one other thing here, and I thank you for the presentation on the reservoir trails and the Heritage Trail. You know, it's going to be terrific. I also want to thank our, as my historical society hat on, and thank our founding fathers, who in 1866 basically started that whole watershed, Doug Monhegan Reservoir. They didn't have front loaders back then. They had horses and wagons and shovels, and their vision is what has made Middletown what it is. And I also have to comment on one other thing because the paper had a story on, and it's very good, the Emergency Housing Honor has moved their friend's house, which is for runaway youth, into the former superintendent's residence. But it was the former residence, not of the Rockland Psychiatric Center, it was, and it was not built in the 20s. It was built in 1888 and 1889, and it was for Sheldon Talcott, who was the third and longest-serving director of the State Homeopathic Asylum for the Insane at Middletown, which we all called the State Hospital. And I have to say that because I grew up in the little house right next to it. So that's, when I read that about it, I went, oh, really? You know, I'm a phone call away. And a little plug, I will be doing a talk for the Town of Walkill Historical Association in August on the history of the Middletown State Hospital, so if you have an interest in that. And other than that, summers, well, actually, one thing we didn't mention, I believe, June 29th is Stars and Stripes Celebration. So we will not have another meeting before that, so remind everyone, Davage Park, starting at 5:00 PM, that will be Stars and Stripe. Please come out. What reminded me of that is because my last note is that summer begins on Friday, so happy summer. Thank you.
Alderman Ramkatoon.
Good evening. As for those girls at the Fishing Derby, like Beyonce said, who runs the world, girls? So I'm very proud of them. The Shade Tree community, I just wanted to say while you're here, thank you for all that you do to keep Middletown green and growing and beautiful, and your work is not going to unnoticed. The Reservoir Trails, excuse me, Reservoir Trails, I can say that. As a Jersey girl who grew up hiking Ramapo Reservation, this is outstanding. Firsthand seeing, you know, from teenager to adult, going up there, walking the trails, and people do take care of it. And it's, you know, it's a beautiful space, and if we have it and we can share it and enjoy it, I think it's really great for our community, so thank you for your work on that. And mayor, thank you for your vision on getting that done. It's exciting stuff to see happen, so I'm going to keep it short tonight. That's all I have. Have a good evening.
Alderman Johnson.
Thank you, Chairman Massey. I wanted to take an opportunity, there are a lot of agencies and initiatives that make the world a better place for Middletown. Shade Tree is one of them. I keep independent tabs of how things are going there. Dave Bechtel's in the back with the warming station. There are two other initiatives I wanted to talk about. One is related to my affiliation with Cornell Cooperative Extension and a process called gleaning. I did not know what gleaning was. Many people do, many people don't. Of course, Alderman Kleiner does. So gleaning is an act of collecting leftover crops from farmers' fields after they've been commercially harvested or in fields where it is not economically profitable to harvest, a practice described in the Bible that became enforced in the Christian kingdoms. So I learned about gleam at Cornell Cooperative Extension, and we have a woman named Stiles Najak, who was recently recognized by Mohawk consultations for her efforts. And Stiles, through Cornell Co-op with her assistant, Megan, they literally move thousands of pounds of produce when either a supermarket or a farmer can't use it. So they will go and pick three acres of blueberries, pack them, put them in the gleam mobile, as we call it, and then distribute it to various centers throughout the county, including Middletown. So Stiles got her award at Mohawk a couple of weeks ago, and I was there as the president of the board, and she got an honorarium of $250. And she stood up and said, I'd like to donate this honorarium to the Repair Cafe of Middletown, New York. And I did not know what Repair Cafe was. I'm sure Jerry does, but I did not. So I looked into that, and it turns out there was an article in the Record a couple of months ago. So a repair cafe is a meeting in which people repair household electrical and mechanical devices, computers, bicycles, clothing, organized by and for local residents, held at a fixed location where tools are available where they can fix broken goods with the help of volunteers. Objective: to reduce waste, to maintain repair skills, and to strengthen social cohesion. So I called Stiles and said, well, what is your connection with Repair Cafe? And she said, nothing, just that it fits with my philosophy of how the world should be. So it turns out that this started in 2009 in Amsterdam, and now, as of March of 18, there are 1,500 repair cafes in 33 countries. And the Earl Bachers started one here in our town about a year ago, and their next one is September 21st, from 10 to 1. And they repair lamps, jewelry, alter clothing. And another thing I found on the Google search was some of these repair cafes are going to be using 3D printing. So if you have that thing that's really old and that little piece that's broken in half, if you glue it back together, we can 3D print it and put it back in your vacuum cleaner that you really love because grandma gave it to you for your birthday. So these are somewhat unsung heroes, gleaning and repair cafe. And the Middletown area and the surrounding area benefit from the initiatives, and I felt they would do some recognition, so thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Alderman Green.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. I thought a repair cafe was what would happen when I visited my parents. You know, no, but it is a great thing. And just to piggyback off of that, I actually had to write everything down over this last weekend. That was going on within 24 hours in the city of Middletown, because it really is eye-opening when you think of the fact that you went to your downtown, you know, concert Friday night, woke up, you could, you know, if you were going to the Fishing Derby, you could register for that, head to the Repair Cafe, you know, go drop off some of those electronics that you couldn't repair at the Repair Cafe. And then at the same time, you know, on your way back, you went to the farmer's market, picked up some stuff, and then took your kids down to the celebration at Thrall Park, all within 24 hours. I mean, that's just amazing to think of, you know, just what else we can expect when downtown, you know, is in full swing, revitalization, all that together, and we started opening up some parks to everything, so there's just a lot to look forward to. Other than that, I really do just want to congratulate, because we won't have a meeting, congratulate the seniors who are going to be graduating from Middletown High School, and that'll be next Wednesday night, so wish them all well in their future endeavors. Thank you.
Alderman Toman.
Yeah, a lot going on. The Repair Cafe, I'm really excited about that. I mean, I think it fits into our seeing Middletown as becoming a healthier place that's really kind of acting, you know... kind of acting, you know, thinking globally but acting locally. I mean, we have the recycling efforts, the Repair Cafe. We've, we've really developed into a throwaway society, buying cheap goods from foreign countries that use, you know, pay workers starvation wages. You know, it's worth it to, you know, get good products, and if we can fix them and keep them, that reduces the waste. And then the parks, I'd like to thank the Trust for Public Land for their study. I can't wait for that to, to open up. I think there's so many benefits to the community with the rail trail and the Davage Park expansion, and now this park, you know, make Middletown a healthier place. We're, we're fighting an obesity crisis in our country, and I think locally, we're doing something about it. I think it's going to improve the public health, and there's so many possibilities, you know, biking, hiking, educational opportunities, maybe even a cross-country course. I used to run cross-country in high school, believe it or not. And also, at the side effect, the positive side effect of increasing our property values, making Middletown just a little bit nicer to live here. So I think, I'm very excited about that. I'd like to thank the Shade Tree Committee for all they do, and again, thinking, you know, globally, we're cutting down a lot of the trees. We, trees are good for the community. They help with the rot water and shade. You know, we have a lot of problems with runoff. And finally, I'd like to thank the police officers for attending our community events this weekend. It was nice seeing them on their bikes and walking around, friendly faces, you know, talking to our residents and our families, handing out stickers, really, you know, make, made Middletown, you know, this, this friendly place. Again, kind of doing the right thing. I think, I think we're moving forward. And so a lot of good things happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business?
Nothing this evening.
New business?
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Katsune, seconded by Alderman Johnson, to approve, to amend City Code Chapter 460, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 460-28. No Parking Zone Handicap Permit to add one spot in front of 69 Sprague Avenue, to expire in two years.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Katsune, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any comments? Roll.
Ram Katsune?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Tobin, to declare the Common Council Lead Agency for the Shawanga Reservoir Dam Structure Rehabilitation Project and is hereby determined to be a Type II action under the state SECR regulations, and as such, will not require further environmental review under SECR.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Katsune?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Yes, aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Ram Katsune, to declare the Common Council Lead Agency in determination of significance for ADA sidewalk improvements.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Ram Katsune. Any questions, comments? Roll.
Ram Katsune?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Does offer new business.
Okay, I believe we have a motion from the floor. Alderman Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to offer this resolution. Resolved, the Common Council of the city of Middletown concurs with the Board of Estimate and Apportionment to approve the purchase of 7 Canal Street for $150,000 plus closing adjustments, authorization for the mayor to sign all related documents, and the following fund balance transfer to fund the purchase of $155,000.
Motion sponsored by, excuse me, Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Ram Katsune. Comments, questions? Roll.
Ram Katsune?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
John Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Local laws?
Nothing this evening.
Audit?
Mr. Chair, I move the accounts be audited, the claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.
Seconded by Alderman Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll move it.
So moved.